He goes and gives us an estimate. He says, I think it's going to cost us must have fixed it.
I'm just saying we need to give everybody the opportunity. If we're going to put out for quote or whatever, everybody needs to have that opportunity. That's my whole point.
And he comes back with estimates, and then I make the decision where we're okay.
Is this not the same deal? Are we not asking them to give us a quote to tell us what it costs to fix our roads? The same deal?
They may not want to now.
Yeah, they may not want to.
Ain't nothing left.
So, so what are we doing? Are we putting it out for 30 days? What are we doing?
We're not doing anything.
Ain't doing nothing.
All right, just move on.
I'll withdraw that motion.
All right. We do thank you for coming out tonight. I think we'll be in touch again. There's some issues that I don't really understand. I mean, I thought professional services, we already got you people hired. I thought we could just, you know, ask for a quote, see how it comes in. I mean, I don't know if it's going to be over $10,000 or whatever. I mean, I don't know that, but we do appreciate y'all coming out.
It's no problem. We appreciate y'all. Anytime we drop this, we get to talk about the services we're performing. I think it gives us good opportunity to show the skills that we have inside KCI. So, no problem. We're happy to be here.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll move on to reports by constitutional officers, department heads. Ms. Cam had nothing. County administrator's report.
We're still working on the initial first month of the budget. That's why I don't have the report read at the night. We're still trying to get all the line items straight. Only other thing I got is the transfer station. We've been talking for weeks about the maintenance that needs to be done on it. Starting Thursday at lunch, it'll be shut down from then till Monday, the following Monday. They'll clean Thursday afternoon. They'll be doing repair work Friday, Saturday, Sunday on the building, so.
Will this just be the building? Is this just going to be the building there? Is this going to be like a recycle? Will it still be operating?
No.
It'll be shut down.
Okay, that's what it matters.
We'll shut down. We've got to have it sheltered down and cleaned out where they can get in there with the bucket.
Yeah, well, I know before we have kept recycling open and that type of stuff.
I don't think any days they'll have enough they can't.
They can go to convenience center and do the recycling.
Just making it clear for the public?
Yeah. Yeah, no, it'll be blocked off because there'll be work people in there mending around. But again, we've sent it to the, I don't know if we've sent it to the paper or not. We've sent it to the radio stations and all that stuff. And have a sign poached it out there for the last several days. So, just so everybody knows, it'll be shut down from Thursday at lunch till the following Monday. Otherwise, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Chair. Next on the agenda is Chairman's report. I would like to say I appreciate veterans. I appreciate the service that y'all have provided through the years and the ones that are active now. And your families, you know, you're special to the people here in America, the true patriots of the United States. I did not serve myself, but I had two brothers that served and a stepbrother. One was in Marine Corps, one was in the Navy, and the other one was in the Army. They didn't get along at home, so they had to put them in separate branches of the government. So, they, 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 they served and luckily, none of them saw combat. But those that have served in combat, we really appreciate you, and we thank you for the freedoms we have here in America. Thank you to all the veterans. I'll move over to Commissioner Bennett, District Number One.
Just like to reiterate, all Commissioner Sayer has said, you know, we can't thank our veterans enough for, you know, for us to have the privilege to sit here tonight. You know, a lot of countries don't have that. And so sorry for all those that gave their lives. As I said in my prayer, you know, for the Lord to please be with the families that lost all their loved ones, you know, it's, they've suffered as much as the person or more than the one that gave his life. So, you know, we really got to owe a debt of gratitude to those people as well, all of those relatives that have served. And I also like to thank all departments of Hart County to keep the wheels turning. And I noticed something recently I'd like to bring up about our road department. Our road department normally bush hogs three times a year around Hart County, three complete rounds. This year, they made four complete rounds around it, and they're back in their fifth, not at 100%, what I understand, but they're, and they are doing the majority of the roads and getting all the intersections, but they're only fifth round. So, we need to give a big shout out to those guys because they have really got out there and made it happen this year with our county, you know, county roads, keeping them cut down and looking good. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll move District Three.
I do.
Commissioner Teasley.
I do, too. Agree with Commissioner Sayer and Commissioner Bennett about our veterans. Appreciate everything they've done for keeping us safe and free. I appreciate all our public safety and county employees. And, Terrell, I got one, I have one question. We know a lot when the paving crews will be paving these new roads, it's on our list.
I can't give you the exact date. They, they are still working. They were at Franklin Springs when I come by the other day. So, they're going to catch Franklin County up to come in between our bids, and then they'll be back here, is my understanding.
So, it shouldn't maybe be before the end of the year, maybe?
I can't, I can't swear to that frankly. And you get into winter time now, so they're going to have to go by temperature and moisture wise when they can and can't pave, so. I'd be glad to call James, I'll find out something, but I'd be scared to make your.
Hopefully, he'll be here soon. That's all I got.
All right, we'll move to District Four. Commissioner Brown.
Just want to reiterate the sentiments. Just want to thank every individual who has served our country, especially those who have made the ultimate sacrifice and fought and died for our freedoms. And unfortunately, our country citizens take those freedoms for granted some days, a lot of days, but nonetheless, just so thankful that we get to live in this great country. And it's because of those brave men and women who served. And one of those freedoms, we got to exercise last Tuesday, voting, Election Day. And just want to, once again, say thank you to our Elections Board, those folks who work at the Elections Office, did a phenomenal job. I want to say that we had all results by, I think, 7:30. And from my calculations and looking, you know, elsewhere, we're probably the first, if not the first county to have all 100% precincts reporting on Tuesday night. So, that's a big accomplishment for our crew there, and it goes to show you the type of people that we have volunteering and working our polls. Appreciate them and everything that they do do. Not every county around us can say that. There's some counties that I think they went to the wee hours of the morning waiting for election results, which I guess that's for their commissioners and constituents to figure out. But nonetheless, just want to give a hats off to them, and their job well done. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll move to District Five. Commissioner Dorsey.
I also want to echo the sentiments and thank our veterans, both past, present, and those in the future who have served and will continue to serve, and those who serve in the future. Every American citizen who lives in this country owes a tremendous debt to our veterans, and I just want to reiterate that. I also wanted to make mention that there was a fire training class last night on refrigeration containers. It was very interesting. The Fire Department hosted, and numerous fire departments around it. The Fine Arts Center will thank the high school and school board for letting us use the Fine Arts Center. There were probably 150 people there last night. It was a very, very informative class, and fortunately, it resulted as a tragedy, but you never know what you're getting into with these things. And one thing that was made abundantly clear is these newer vehicles now, all the refrigerant has propane in it, so they're very explosive. So, just wanted to throw that out. Anything 21, 2021 model and newer has it, so just FYI. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you all for those reports. We'll move on to 12A, old business bid award for construction manager at this transfer station building.
Yeah, I put in your packet where the architectural firm evaluated the bidding contractors in his evaluation. We had two bids, both of them well-qualified companies. And it came down to quality of work, everything was, we're even. The only difference was the price. Charles Black was right at $400,000 less than the other company. So, our recommendation, based on the quality and everything being equal, and based strictly on the price, would be to award to Charles Black Construction.
I'll make a motion. We take the county administrator's recommendation and award this to Charles Black Construction. And just so everybody knows, they built a jail. They've done a lot of stuff in the county with the school system as well.
I'll second it.
Then we got a motion to second. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor?
It's a five-o vote.
All right, we'll move on to Town of Byersville, annexation.
This has been in your packet meeting before last. We're up to about the end of our 45-day period to make a ruling on it. I don't have any more information to give you than what you already had in your package before.
I'll make a motion that we, do we have to give you the authority to write the letter to the DCA?
Yeah, y'all making decisions.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we give the authority to the administrator to write a letter to DCA on our intent to deny and seek arbitration.
I'll give you a second.
What basis? You don't put the basis?
We'll go with the same as we did for the previous density and strain on services, EMS.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's a five-o vote. All right, we'll move on to Chamber of Commerce. We have Ms. Amanda here with us tonight, and she just got back from a game changer event, and we're very happy for her to be able to be selected out of the state of Georgia and go through that event that they had, so.
Yeah, thank you. That was very eye-opening. Athens is a little different than Hart County, but we face many of the same problems, so some of those things we came up with, I think we can apply here. First off, thanks for having me tonight. I've got a couple of my ambassadors slash leadership Hart cohort here with me, so hi. They're doing a great job coming up with that capstone project, and hopefully, they'll have something really cool for you guys in the future. But what I'm here tonight for is the Christmas tree lighting. It is coming up very soon. I know it's, it doesn't feel like it should be Christmas yet, but here we are. November the 24th, from 5 until 8, we're going to be at the square, our beautiful Christmas tree, the new one that we got last year. Thank y'all for that. I think that really kind of ramped up some excitement last year, and we're ready to see it hit the yard again at the courthouse again this year. One of the things we did a little different this year, we are extending the time, just because there's so many kids now. It's a growing event, and I want to give everybody time with Santa, so it will be going on until 8 instead of 7 like it usually does. And then also, you know, we usually get a special guest to light the tree. I think there is no doubt in anybody's mind the kind of impact that Chuck Hawthorne has had on this community and his business and everything that's going on. So, this year, we're going to be honoring Chuck as we light the tree. His family's going to be the one to light the switch, so that's going to be a really special thing that's going on that night. But other than that, that's about it. It's business as usual, and we hope to see you guys there, hope to see everyone there. It's going to be a good night, and then right behind it's going to be the Christmas parade, so we'll be, you know, rocking and rolling for the next month or two.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Amanda.
All right, we'll move on to 12D, reapproval of the millage.
Take your time, Mr. Teasley.
I wonder why they got back up here and said three of them, too.
Well, you know, if I've done everything right, everybody'd be surprised. It would be. If you recall here, several weeks ago, we passed this. At the time, I had the figures wrong on the deductions. I used the countywide bond number instead of the countywide wide number. When you put those calculations in, apartment revenue caught me as usual. But what we done, we recalculated and dropped the millage rate from, rolled back from 3.974 to 3.970, which equates to about a 2.5% decrease in the tax from last year. Y'all want to take off? We want to go through all three of them, take all three of them one time?
Yeah, it'd be fine.
Just in fairness of time. And yes, of course, the number, anytime one number changes, y'all change. So, this is the rollback resolution for local option sales tax, the lost, it stated, I mean, it don't change, that's what it is. It's 2.186 mills, but you incorporated and unincorporated here dropped to 3.972. And we just declared that we added the half-mill countywide EMS on this form, too, just so there's an official record there. And which changes to PT-35 form. That's advertising, I'm sorry. I ain't got the PT-35 up there. PT-35, which again reflects all those millage rates. There's the new 3.972, the half-mill EMS, and 9.310 for the school. And I ain't got my calculator to come up. We total millage rate is 13 points something for the whole countywide. But that's, that's the correct numbers, and we just need to reapprove these forms and the resolution.
All right. Can we get a motion to reapprove the millage rollback rate, sales tax rollback rate, and approval of the total millage, the PT-35?
Second.
Who made the motion? Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's a five-o vote. All right, now we'll move on to approve the chairman to sign the letter intent for aerial photography.
Every two to three years, we have a new aerial photo done, and they have, GMRC chooses the vendors, all the counties go in together, and so they can get a better bid price. GMRC has awarded, decided who they're going to award the contract to. And we budgeted for this, so it's nothing new. But it's time to sign the letter of commitment that we're going to take them when they get them done. They'll take them about January, February, when all the leases are off, and we should get them by November, December next year. But it's a $24,300 something. I budgeted $25,000 in the budget for the tax, the social office to take care of that, so it's within the budget. We need to authorize the chairman to sign that letter of intent.
All right, can we get a motion?
I motion to approve the chairman signing the letter.
I got a motion, Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's a five-o vote. All right, now we'll move on to new business, board appointment for the library board.
I included a letter of endorsement or recommendation from the library board itself.
Mr. Callaway.
Mr. Callaway. He had been on the board before, I think, and their, their recommendation to reappoint him back to the board.
I make a motion to approve, Chris, Chris Callaway?
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Brown. Any other discussion?
We just need to state that he's going to fill the unexpired term.
He go fill the unexpired term. Does not put it in our notes.
All right.
I didn't, I'm sorry, but that's what he'll fill in.
I'm in my motion.
Okay. Give us a second.
I gave you a second.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's a five-o vote. All right, we'll move on to Veterans Day proclamation.
I've included the proclamation that we do every year, just updated it for y'all if you wish to take it up and do it. It's that.
Veterans Day proclamation. Whereas on Veterans Day, our nation comes together to honor our veterans and commemorate the legacy of profound services and sacrifice they have upheld in pursuit of a more perfect union. And whereas, through their steadfast defense of Americans' ideas, our service members have endured through it, our country still stands strong, our founding principles still shine, and nations around the world know blessings of freedom. And whereas, the selflessness of our service members is unmatched, and they remind us that there are few things more fundamentally American than doing our utmost to make a difference in the lives of others. And whereas, just as our veterans stood watch on freedom's frontier, so have they safeguarded the prosperity of our nation in our neighborhoods, our businesses, and our homes. And whereas, serving as teachers, engineers, parents, and local government employees, these patriots have made contributions to civil, civilian life that serve as a testament to their dedication to the welfare of our country. And whereas, the Hart County Board of Commissioners designate the week of November 11, 2025 as Veterans Week, and recognize all veterans of Hart County by presenting this proclamation to the American Legion Post 109. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the County Board of Commissioners of County of Hart that all citizens observe the day with appropriate ceremonies in honor of those who have served to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy. Proclaim this on the 11th day of November 2025. Do you have a motion to approve?
So may.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's a five-o vote. Okay, new business, 12C, annexation moratorium discussion. This was, Commissioner Dorsey asked this to be put on the agenda, so I'll give him the floor at this time.
So, we know that there's going to be at least three, not at least, but three, possibly two, maybe three, who knows? New council members on the city of Hartwell City Council. I think we all know, we all get those calls about growth, annexations, and all this stuff that's going on with the growth. And if you look at the last election cycles, the last three, growth has been one of the hot buttons. And we know we have problems with EMS and some other areas, and I'm going to ask that we put in form, and I'll put it in form of a motion, that we have the county administrator draft a letter to the city, mayor and council of the city of Hartwell, asking them to enact a moratorium in their December meeting to not have any more or not take any annexation requests or anything until we can sit down and meet as a board with the new city council when it takes office in January and have a good dialogue and let them understand the things that we have. And when I say this, I'm talking specifically residential related, not, not commercial, business related. And I'll put that in form of a motion.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor to ask Terrell to write a letter to the city, mayor and council to encourage them to.
Enact a moratorium in the December meeting.
Enact a moratorium on annexation.
At their December meeting.
At their December meeting. For how long?
To say in the first quarter, till we at least meet with the council, the new council.
Okay. You got a second?
I don't see how they can do it. I, I don't see how it's possible to get them to even come to agree. I wouldn't care, I wouldn't care if I never saw another annexation.
We're just asking, is all we're doing. I mean, I talked to everybody. I thought everybody was good with this.
Yeah, well, I told you, I told you, I don't care if, I wouldn't care if another one ever come across this, yes. You know, it's trouble, it's trouble every time.
I pick up my phone and I call the council members. You know, I, I don't think it's my spot to sit here and demand them or dictate them as a dictator from the county's perspective, but I do on a commissioner level represent my constituents, and I call the city council members and the mayor, and we have discussions. You know, I don't, I haven't heard firmly from them if they can even legally put this out there as a moratorium. They do have ordinances in place, and they have different stipulations that we don't have here in the county, so, you know, they can tell or make special ordinances for these parcels that are placed in, and we do try to negotiate to the best of our ability, but I don't think that it's my place to act as a dictator here.
Well, I call some as well, but the thing of it is, annexations are so tough. I mean, it's the people's right to annex their, annex their property.
It's the city citizens, too.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I understand that, guys. I talked, I called everybody, and I talked to everybody, and everybody was okay with this. We're not dictating. I don't know why Commissioner Brown wants to say that. We're simply asking. If they don't want to do it.
Calling them, I mean.
Well, but if it comes from the board, that seems like we're united in this effort. That was my whole point. When I talked to you, I talked to the chairman, I talked to Commissioner Teasley, I talked to Commissioner Bennett, everybody seemed to be okay with it.
I was talking with you, putting it on the agenda, but I wouldn't deny anybody.
I talked to a couple of them. I talked to a couple of them.
We're just asking.
I talked to a couple of them, and two or three of them wouldn't call them back. I guess they knew what it was, you know, so.
If y'all want to do it.
I don't think they're going to agree to any kind of meeting. Like I said, annexations are right, and it's hard to fight, so, you know, they're not, they're not going down that street, I don't think at all.
My point here is a simple courtesy request. It is not a dictator thing or anything like that. And I will make very clear that that was the case. It's their decision. That was the whole purpose of it. We all know we got problems with our EMS specifically. I mean, we don't, we don't even have enough people to staff our substations. But that's fine. I, I felt like my discussion with each of you, everybody was okay with it, but that's okay.
All right. We'll move on to public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board on public comment? If, with Mr. Lear, you'll come to the front and state your name and address.
Bill Lear, and I guess I'm going to represent my family. We own land on the outside of Hartwell, in Walmart镇, dated bought in 1953, and paid a fair price for it back then. We've been taxed for it ever since then. 1967, father died, mother continued, went to work. All the brothers and sisters, I've got my brother Mike and David here tonight, we all went to work, just like a lot of us did at 12 years old, and throw stole whatever, make, you know, happened to her, where she wouldn't have to leave the farm. She could have easily left. It was a farm, and we grew cotton and mena peppers and all back then. And over time, they'd put a sole bank, and then he passed away in 67, 45 years old. And mother died in 88. About two years before she died, we sold a piece of properties to Walmart, and they came out, that's where they wanted it to come, at there. It was annexed into the city at that time. And then, over the years, you know, we sat on it and waited another 10 or 12 years, and they built a superstore, and we were able to sell them that land. And, you know, it was our purpose and just annexing what we needed to at the time to, and never had any trouble. Motel wanted annex, but the search bought the property, and we allowed them to come across ours, as Mr. Rook has. And, you know, we've got opportunities. I mean, we sat on that land for years and years, you know, we're not greedy, we just, we just have got along good enough that we didn't have to do anything, you know, just sold it when somebody would come. But I can tell you this, over the lifetime, over that period of time, those opportunities are few and far. are few and far between. Even when somebody comes, and I love it, be nice, like restaurants and things like that, but you know, you just have to, people, people going to build what they want to build, it's their money to do what they want to. It's our land, I think, to do what we want to. And we'll have opportunities on the backside of Parkdale to annex it, I've got a deal, have a deal working for a while, it's gone through the city, city's talking to somebody, it may not pass, but I don't believe it's y'all's responsibility, y'all, y'all's got enough problems with the roads, you know, you, you have identified problems or causes of roads, that's where y'all be working at right there, tech, fix them, they, people on those major highways are tearing them up. We're just asking to, the comprehensive plan that y'all had, the county city had, all the growth was commercial and, and dense growth is that way. And, um, I think it's up to the city to make the decision if they want to do it or not, but they got stipulations and, and will build it in accordance, where there's one driveway in, one driveway out maybe, and not 25, 30 homes on, on the road, one right after another, like it happens in the county. So you got ordinance and, and, uh, we just, we just, uh, I appreciate y'all not taking that vote. Uh, I realize the political climate is different than it was a year ago, but you choose not, you chose not to do that years ago or, or first of the year, you're doing it now because elections change, but, you know, only 28% of people vote in the city, that's not that many when you think about it. And, 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 uh, you get called, you go get called, just like everybody else does, but that's not the majority of people. There's, the growth now there in the city has been enormous, it's back like it was in the 50s when I was a boy. You know, 29 highway went through this community, had the same problems back then probably they got right now. But, um, you know, I just think it's, it's, it's best that y'all support the growth of Hartwell, and I know the EMS problem, EMS might be a problem because either they don't want to work or you may not pay, but I don't know, but everybody has that same problem. And no doubt in my mind, if you got a business, you have a problem with retaining, uh, you know, good people, because good people can go anywhere in the world if they want to work. So, you know, that's, that's our issue, y'all might want to work on fix if you can't, but, uh, I, I don't want anything, we don't want anything to, uh, grade the value of that property and, uh, you know, stopping annexations, it certainly does, because you don't have a sewer, you don't want, you got water out there, but I think it's a four inch line out there. Another thing we did years ago, we let, uh, the water and sewer carry a, a 12 inch line to Melly Farm over there to save the county a ton of money right there. And I haven't gone down there 29 and come back over.
You talking about the line that went through Melly Farm that was in there?
Right.
Yep.
And, uh, so we, we, we've, over the years, I think our family's helped Hartwell. I do believe that the money, that, you know, tax money comes out of this, uh, goes into its coffers, there's a lot of it comes off that property right there, that we, we just appreciate you being a little, you know, being, you know, they've got to be a place, it'll stop, money will stop it one day. Uh, you know, that's, that's not going, the money's going to do it, it's what buys, what keeps things going, it'll stop things, you know. Land gets too pricey, the people can't do what they want to live on. But I'm just asking, uh, uh, I, 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 we didn't know about this, I didn't see this till earlier, um, that I was in a meeting in Savannah, and, uh, so I called the bus when I found out about, about two o'clock and they came down with me and, you know, so I appreciate you giving us a little time to figure out some things, I'm just...
So, so just, I think you're directing a lot of it at me, because I put that on Jim.
I'm not directing anything.
But I just, I just want to be clear, all I asked, when I talked to every one of the commissioners and I thought everybody was okay with it, was that we simply just ask the city council if they would hold off on any annexations until we met with the new council after the first of the year, that's all I asked. If, if somebody goes and files an annexation thing today, it's probably not going to happen till, till after the first year anyway. But I just wanted to extend that olive branch because annexation's been a contentious issue. Um, and when we start getting these large project, housing projects and things like that, you know, we have to look at it from our standpoint as well. Um, you know, EMS, get a phone call from somebody who needs an ambulance and they can't get one, I've been there, um, and it's, it's, it's a problem right now, and it's not, it's not just a Hart County issue, it is a statewide issue. Nobody's going into this field, you've got people who are working tons of hours, are getting burned out, we lost another paramedic last week to Banks County, who's still going to keep working here part-time, but we've got substations that, unfortunately, we don't have the manning to do, we've tried to add a fifth truck to do 12-hour shifts and that's helped out a little bit, but again, just keeping everything manned i- is the problem, and that's what we're trying to work on.
They, they leaving because of money, you may have paid them, you may have paid them fairway, I mean, I'm sure they're getting fairway, it's a rewarding job. Uh, I would say I, they've come to my office twice over the last 10 years, one time for me, one time for mother. They're, I'd rather be, I'd rather get beat those men and women that come in here from Hart County EMS to support my, my health or anybody else's health than, than a merchant doctor 40 miles, 20 miles away or if they were even right here. That, those persons are very qualified.
Mr., Mr. Leard, I, I'd like to say that, you know, uh, as far as EMS, I, I feel like that we as a board are partly responsible of why we're at with the EMS. They have no room to grow where they're at right now. Uh, all the bunk space is taken and, and like Commissioner Dorsey said, we need to add more trucks right now, but, and we've talked about building a new EMS station in budget time, and that's going to be on our agenda, I hope by the first of the year, to get something started with a new EMS station to give them more room and we can add more trucks or whatever. Don't know about where we're going to get the personnel, but we don't have the room for more personnel now. So, that is something that we are, I feel like, uh, we're going to be working on in the near future.
And just so you know, I mean, we, Marshall and myself met with every one of the paramedics, we spent three nights down here, consecutive nights, listening to the issues, we paredoed, we took all the data down, we paredoed it, and this board has addressed the majority of those issues. Uh, unfortunately, you, you've got turnover, we've started paying for these EMTs to go to paramedic school and they, they sign a contract, they work for the county for a certain period of time. We've done all we can do, and it's, it's, it's a statewide issue, it's not just a Hart County issue.
Well, I, I just, when you say here moratorium, uh, I, I thinking that, that...
Well, maybe that was the wrong choice of words, it was simply just a request.
I would, I would talk to city about maybe support, maybe whatever you could, when you do moratorium, what you're looking at is a, in y'all's case, prolonged, it went from, what, six months, year, two years on the ordinance, and that's, that can be, you know, they, you're lucky and they get sued from somebody. I'm just telling you, from our standpoint, let the city, if, if the city don't, don't do it, um, we'll let the, we'll let the developers...
It would've been up to them anyway, I mean, we were just simply going to ask, that was the whole point.
Well, I think you already know probably which way they'll go, but I, that's why I'm saying, why, why hadn't that already been done before then, you know?
Because we're getting bombarded with them, I mean, we just had, with counting yours, I mean, this is three within the last two months.
But you did mention the explosion of growth in the city, the, the explosion of growth has not been in the city.
Not, it's not in the city.
No, it says it's been in the county, it's 800% over.
It's equally proportioned, if you look at the number of homes that's been approved, if you take it from percentages, uh...
Those warehouses have been built.
I understand, but you got to plan on that.
Well, they, they plan on, uh, they're not happening yet, and that, and that'd be a thing the city all do, and y'all all do, if a person doesn't fulfill that building permit within a certain time, that'll be a pull, so it doesn't...
It does.
It does.
It goes with the, it doesn't go with the developer, it goes with the property.
Well, yeah, one thing that I, that it concerns me is like, uh, I know last week my, we were going through the gin, I went back over, uh, and I'm not, this is not a personal comment, this is a comment about the particular piece of land, of that last annex, not annexation, but, uh, level three out at, um, Crossroads Church, right across there, 38, there'll be five houses on that thing, or five or six, right? To me, what you're doing, it's better to put those 100 houses on a, on a 30 acre spot in the city, annex into the city, and, uh, and, uh, that you got services, got everything ready for them, instead of going out there and taking that 30 acres for five or six acres, because those 30 people are going to want a house somewhere, and if they have to go out and buy five acres, you take away 150 acres of the farm. And, um, I, I'd be real concerned about that too. Uh, I know that, I know that, there's nobody here about eggs any better than I do, because I, that's all my life has been about, uh, through college and the first few years and all, and then even with the, with the EMC that worked with a lot of the egg, but I, I see a need to always protect the county, but the city's growth is, ought to be the city's responsibility.
And that's why, that's who would make that decision, if it had happened.
Thank you, Mr. Leard.
Thank you, Bill.
All right. Anyone else for public comment?
Can we take them?
Second. All right, uh...
I make a motion, we exit into executive session for litigation personnel real estate.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Bennett, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's a five oh vote.